Welcome to tonight's candidate forum brought to you by the League of Women Voters of the Midland area and Midland Community Television, or MCTV. This evening, you will be hearing from general election candidates for Midland County Commissioner, districts four, five, and seven. District six candidates both withdrew due to serious unanticipated circumstances, so there will not be a forum for that race. I am Kim Stanky, President of the League of Women Voters of the Midland area. The League is a nonpartisan political organization that works at the national, state, and local levels. Membership in the League is open to all people age 16 and over, both women and men. We are committed to the informed and active participation of citizens in government, and we neither support nor oppose candidates. We always welcome new members. Information about joining the League is available on our website, www.lvvw-midland.org, or you can ask any League member about our organization. At the conclusion of tonight's forum, please stay tuned for a presentation of the three state ballot proposals. Here's an overview of how tonight's program will run. We will include all the available county commissioner candidates in this session. As I introduce them, I will include the district for which they are running and their party affiliation, so that it's clear how the contested races pair up. Following introductions, each candidate will have an opportunity to give a two-minute opening statement. Following opening statements, I'll pose questions to which each will be asked to respond. Each candidate will be allowed an initial response to each question up to two minutes in length, as well as reply after each has had an opportunity to give initial responses. Replies will be limited in length to one minute per candidate. Speaker order has been determined. That order will be maintained throughout our questioning. Following the question and answer period, each candidate will have an opportunity to make a one-minute closing statement. Jane Worth and Mary Omen, please recognize yourself, are official timers. They will raise a warning card when the speaker has 30 seconds, then 15 seconds, and when time is up. I will stop the speaker, allowing only the completion of a sentence. Before we get started, I ask the audience to please refrain from any vocal reactions for or against any candidate or statements made by the candidates, and to applaud only when the moderator has announced that the forum has ended. So now, let's get started. I'm going to now announce the commissioners, the commissioner candidates for districts four, five, and seven, so please raise your hand as your name is called. The candidates are from left to right, Republican Gay Trwilliger, Democrat Connie Glave, all from district four, Republican Jim Geisler did not respond, but Democrat Allison Wilcox of district five is here, and Democrat Elena Smith, and Republican Scott Noson from district seven. So keep in mind that we have three races here at the tables, with two parties vying for the commissioner role in each district. Now let's get down to the business. We start off with opening statements, and Ms. Trwilliger, you are the first.
Very good. Good evening. My name is Gay Trwilliger, and I am your experienced incumbent commissioner. I've had the honor of serving Midland County in district four for the past six years, and those townships would be Midland Township, Mount Haley, and Ingersoll Townships. First of all, I'm a fourth-generation Midlander. I know Midland well. I am blessed to be wife, and also mother of two, and grandma to four. I have a background in health sciences, and also a master's in public health, which has proved to be very beneficial as we have navigated our way through the pandemic. I also taught as an adjunct professor at Delta College, and also served as an executive director, serving the youth of Midland County. I gained valuable experience in writing contracts for federal and state grants, capacity and coalition building, administration, and I virtually connected with all sectors of the county. I presently serve as vice chair on the Human Services Committee, and that would include setting wages for new hires, as well as doing labor negotiations. I also serve on the Community Advisory Corrections Advisory Board, which is a very high-level board that has a 12-membership Board, including our Prosecutor's Office, probation, community mental health, the sheriff, specialty courts, 1016, JNA, ETC, TRICAP, and our Corrections Manager. I also serve on the Pinecrest and DHHS Board. During that time, I was active with working with hiring our current Director and Director of Nursing. I also serve on senior services, community mental health, Region Seven, and Recovery Court. Thank you.
Ms. Glave, you get the next two minutes.
Okay. I'm Connie Glave. I worked 29 and a half years at the Midland Hospital that became Midland Regional Medical Center, and then, when I retired after that 29 and a half years, I've spent the last 11 years feeding people in the community, both through our food pantry at Messiah Lutheran Church, and I was the coordinator and on the board for the mobile food pantries for Midland County Emergency Food Pantry Network, where we brought in a semi of food once a month and fed between 250 and 350 families who are struggling in our community. Sometimes, it's important to have a different perspective on the board, and part of why I'm running is because I feel that I have that different perspective that may be valuable to the community, and I decided I wanted to run. My primary issue is fiber broadband, because I live in an area where we don't have internet, we don't have cable, and I'm hoping that at some point, they will bring fiber internet, because that's the future of internet. And that's all I have.
Okay. Ms. Wilcox, you're next.
Thank you to the League and to MCTV for hosting us tonight. Here's a little background on me. I grew up in Georgia and lived in Texas and Louisiana before moving to Midland 22 years ago, with my husband Neil and our two children. I have degrees in chemistry and chemical engineering, and I worked as a manufacturing engineer for IBM before becoming a full-time mom. I've enjoyed living in Midland, and it really feels like home now. I've been an active volunteer in the community since we moved here, from being a Girl Scout leader and a picture parent when my children were young, to serving as Assistant Treasurer at my church and being on the leadership team of Women of Michigan Action Network. Three years ago, I decided I wanted to learn more about our local government, so I took part in the City of Midland Citizen Academy. This year, I've also been attending Commissioner Board meetings and committee meetings to better understand what the job of county commissioner entails. The commissioners set policy, oversee the budget and the various departments of the county, and they listen to and advocate for constituents. The job is really less about political party and more about being willing to work as a team with the other commissioners and the county staff, to make sure the government runs efficiently and effectively. After observing for several months, it's a job I believe that I can do. I also believe that my experience, skills, and community connections will help me be especially effective at the third item on the list, listening to and advocating for constituents. I will be out in the community and accessible to the residents of district five. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, you're next.
Thank you. First, I want to say a thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, and to the MCTV team for allowing us to use their studio. I very much appreciate them doing this. My name is Elena Smith, and I am running to be county commissioner for Midland Seventh District. This district is entirely in the city of Midland and includes my home near Grove Park. I am a recent homeowner in the city of Midland, but have lived in Midland County for my entire life, for 33 years now. I grew up on Haley Street and then spent my teen years living in Warren Township, before moving back to the city of Midland as an adult. I went to Midland Public Schools and then on to Delta College. From there, I transferred to Saginaw Valley State University, where I majored in Spanish and social work, eventually obtaining my master's in social work in 2020. I work for a local hospital, advocating for my patients and working to get them the resources they need for a safe discharge plan, and also having plenty of difficult conversations with families. I have a long history of volunteering for projects in Midland County, be it from the Adopt a Highway Program, to the Midland County Emergency Mobile Food Pantry Network, to the Diaper Alliance, to the Humane Society of Midland County, and to supervising and running a United Way Flood Relief Distribution Center after the 2020 floods. I am also on the leadership team of Women, Women of Michigan Action Network, where I've been a member for seven years. I have a great love for our county and the community members that make it. I hope that you consider me to be your county commissioner, as I know I would do a good job for our community. Thank you.
Mr. Noson?
Thank you. My name is Scott Noson. I am the current commissioner for district seven, which, as stated before, is 100% within the city. I am married to my wife, Margie. I have two children, seven grandchildren, and believe it or not, one great-grandchild, which is hard to believe, but that's the status of that. I retired working for Dow Chemical in 2008, after 33 years. I'm a 47-year resident of Midland County, so I know the county. And in fact, in that 47 years, I've spent all that time in district seven. We've moved once, but both homes were within district seven, so I know the district as well. When we talk about why, for me, why is two things. Why am I running? Well, first of all, because I wanted to give back to the county, to our government. I've enjoyed my time in Midland. I want to give back. That's fairly simple. But why me? And I think there's really three reasons for that. One is experience, one is leadership, and one is results. From an experience standpoint, I think I've mentioned a 48-year resident, but I'm also a four-term county commissioner. From a leadership standpoint, I'm the vice chair of the Board of Commissioners. I also chair the Finance Committee. I'm also a board member of the Michigan Association of Counties and president of the Northern Michigan Counties Association. From a results standpoint, it's fairly clear. We have a balanced budget, have for eight years. I'm proud to be...
To all of the candidates for your introductory information. Now, let's begin hearing your answers to questions that members of the Midland League believe will be of interest to voters. I will let you know when it's your turn to answer. Also, I will repeat a question if anyone asks. Ms. Trwilliger, you're first up. This is a two-part question. What do you consider the chief priorities of county government, and what do you consider to be the top priorities facing the commissioners in the coming term?
Simply said, our top priority is to serve the needs of our residents in Midland County. And we do that very strategically through our committees, which are finance, and personnel, and our contracts. And we have to have all three of those things in order to execute our mandated services, which are mandated by the state of Michigan. There are 13 of them, and I might add, that I may add later on. This is our fact sheet for Midland County. We also execute 14 additional services here in Midland County. So we are overachievers here in our community, as you all know. Part two is what are our needs? I would say, over and over again, two, a lot of focus in the next year will, actually two is what has been reported, but I do think it will be three, to rebuild the dams, and also make sure that they're safe and flood mitigation. That will be accomplished. We just had dialogue with the Midland Business Alliance. We received a grant for mitigation and planning through Eagle, and that is working with the MBA as well, and so I'm very pleased with the progress on that. It's phenomenal. Broadband, that was already brought up, and in Ingersoll Township, they are working very hard with lake.net. So you should have, yes, yes.
I'm not in Ingersoll.
Mount Haley, well, I can talk to you about that, too, but they're not as far along as Ingersoll. Broadband is big. We need to execute that. The MBA, we're working collaboratively with them, and we're trying to work with the leaders of all the townships for the broadband, also to retain the best that we can in our community for our personnel. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Glave, do you repeat the question again? You have two minutes. The question is two-part. What do you consider the chief priorities of county government, and what do you consider to be the top priorities facing the commissioners in this coming term?
Okay. The, as was said before, the main priority of the commission is to serve the people of Midland County, and that, but to also serve the people in your own township. Sometimes, what the people in your township need is not necessarily what the rest of the county would like, and then you have to negotiate what you do. The issues that I see are the dams and the drainage, not only from the dams, but Midland floods quite often, and we need to do something to mitigate those issues that are going to continue to happen with climate change. The second thing that I see is affordable housing, and that has been an issue for a long time. I routinely get people coming for food that say, "I can't take anything that needs a refrigerator, because I'm living in a tent," and that's not acceptable to me. The third thing that I see is with the COVID, is hiring and retention, finding employees for the jobs that are out there that are open, and our business people who are needing help, and finding a way to retain those people. Thank you.
Ms. Wilcox?
Thank you. The top priorities of the county government are to carry out the mandates from the state, to set the budget and make sure the budget is met, and to ensure that the county has the resources and the employees needed to carry out those missions. The top priorities for the commissioners, the problems that they'll be facing in the coming years, number one, which I think probably everyone here agrees with, is flood prevention and mitigation, not just with the dams, but for people like those in district five who live downstream of the dams. My neighborhood has flooded twice in the past few years, 2017 and 2020, and it would really be nice not to do that again. The county commissioners are working with the MBA to set up the Advisory Committee on Infrastructure, and I'm really pleased to hear some of the things that that commission is, committee is working on, that should come up with some innovative ideas. Another top priority for the county commission should be to see that, to do what they can to ensure that we have smart, sustainable growth for the years ahead. Midland's population has held steady recently, but that's not good enough for the future. We need to continue to grow, to bring in new, young people. We need Midland to be a warm and welcoming place for people of all kinds, so that our community will grow and our economy will remain strong.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. So I feel that the top priorities for the county Board of Commissioners, first and foremost, the first one is what any elected position should be, is to listen to your constituents and to respond to the needs that they have and the priorities that they have for the community. And by talking to them and listening to them, you can find what their needs and wants are for the community, and balance the budget and provide services based on this. You need to do this. You need to work with other agencies within the community, the Midland Community Foundation. You need to work with other county governments, with township governments and other commissions, such as the Road Commission, to get done for our community what needs to be done. As was mentioned previously, we also need to carry out state mandates, work with many departments in the county and in the city, and to create a balanced budget that works and meets all of these needs, which can be a lot to do. I would feel that this term's top priorities needs to be affordable housing, as mentioned. When I'm talking to community members, I hear over and over again that they do not have the income to rent a suitable place for their family, or have the money, or know how to even, buy a house in our community. I think we need to encourage, we need to encourage affordable starter homes for families, and encourage apartments being constructed, more apartments being constructed in our community, so that we can have a place for people to live, so that they will continue to grow here and live here, and that will help our entire community and increase our tax base. Thank you.
You're up, Mr. Noson.
Thank you. In terms of the role of county government, it's quite simple. It's to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of all residents in the community, and that's what we try to do with all of our programs. In terms of priorities, we've mentioned the dam. Fix the dam dams is a huge priority, and I'm glad that everybody is also seeing the fact that it's not just the dams, but it's the downstream consequences, and we're going to have to work with the city also in terms of drains and decoupling drains. So there's quite a lot that's going on there. We've talked about high-speed internet. I think it's a shame that children will go to a McDonald's to get high-speed internet to be able to do their homework. It was really exacerbated by the COVID situation in the past couple of years, so I think that's a priority, and I think it has to happen quickly. The third thing is what we call ARPA funding, America Rescue Plan Act. We have been fortunate to get $16 million, $8 million in the previous year, and $8 million for this year. How we spend that, we're working with the community foundation, with the nonprofits, and working with the Midland Business Alliance, the for-profits, and developing the criteria for who should get that money. And then finally, a point about local control. I think we should always advocate for the control of programs at the lowest possible level, in this case, the community level or Midland County. So with that, I thank you and look forward for the questions.
Thank you. Mr. Williger, do you have one-minute response?
I did want to mention that, so Elena, that for the Road Commission, we really don't have a lot of jurisdiction over them. That is up to each one of the townships, and they have a budget. So it works a little bit different than in the city, and each one of them has a certain allotment within their budget, and it's not necessarily going to be the same depending on their population. And it goes directly to the supervisor and their, some townships have larger or smaller personnel, but at any rate, that's how it works, and it's an allocation, and the allocations aren't the same. It's based on a tax base.
Okay. Ms. Glave, do you have a one minute?
No.
Okay. Ms. Wilcox?
Yes, thank you. I forgot to mention, another concern is that we need to be ready for the next pandemic. We know that the way things are in the world, another one will be here sooner or later, and we need to build up our public health department. We have incredible employees in the public health department, and they did a great job. They did the best they could during COVID, and I know that there's a planned renovation of the public health department space, which will help them do their jobs better, and that is an area that I see we definitely need to work on.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Smith, one minute?
Yes. I would just like to echo that I agree with what Gay and Connie and Scott said about internet connectivity being so important, especially in the rural areas. It really is something that people struggle with. You mentioned people going to McDonald's. I was one of those person, people. I got basically my entire bachelor's and master's degree sitting at the McDonald's on South Saginaw Road for six hours at a time, because in Warren Township, there wasn't internet. So, yeah, so I would just like to echo and say that I agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Noson?
Yeah. On the issue of affordable housing, I'm absolutely supportive of that. I participated with the Health and Human Services Committee, and you may have heard this term, ALIS, Asset Limited, Income Constrained But Employed, and it's exactly that population that struggles with housing. Here's the problem. We, as a county, don't control the vehicles that control affordable housing. That happens at municipality level, city level, township level. We can and should be very supportive and do what we can, and I think maybe some of our ARPA money could go to some of those types of initiatives. So I just wanted to clarify the difficulty of that particular challenge.
Thank you. Ms. Trwilliger, you're first on the next question. Regarding the county health department, what changes, if any, would you make in the event of a future health emergency?
Well, thank you for that question. I will say, first of all, that I 100% supported our health director. I was in on the hiring team when we hired and brought Fred Janosky on, and I feel that the way that the county navigated the pandemic was spot-on, and I really, really support that. We received some negativism from both sides, and I just feel that Fred had to navigate, working with superintendents, school districts, within the health community. He worked significantly with the health department, with senior services, and really, really vaccinated a large population. The other thing I would say is that we were very supportive of our employees. We needed to have them on-site and healthy to be able to execute their jobs, and they were, and we protected them, and they felt protected. We really had minimal OSHA concerns, and that comes from working in human services. And I'm very pleased with how, it was a tough time to go through all of that during the flood at the same time. They coexisted together, and I cannot tell you how hard that health department worked. There were staff that worked 20... There were staff that, that worked 24/7, 12 months, didn't get a day off, and Scott and I, we know who they were, and I'm, I'm really proud of our employees, and I think that we, we handled it well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Glave?
Yeah, the, the thing that I would say is that they, we need to make sure that our health department has the resources that they need now that we know that a pandemic is possible. Before, it was easy to think, oh, this is never going to happen to us, but now we've been through it once, and we know that it's going to happen again. So make sure that they have the resources that they need so that they're prepared and, and training for the next one. As far as how they did during the one that we had, I was truly impressed with how the health department handled the situation. I went through one of the vaccination processes that they did. It was well organized. It was quick. You didn't have to wait hours to get through, and I was very impressed with what our county did for the pandemic, and I hope that we do as well in the next one, if there is one. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wilcox?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Regarding the county health department, what changes, if any, would you make in the event of a future health emergency?
Thank you. Well, I, I agree with what's been said, that the employees in our public health department did a fantastic job with the resources that they had. Looking at the pandemic as it happened in 2020, it was really difficult for everyone, and I understand that, to navigate what we knew and what we didn't know about COVID. It was constantly changing. It was very confusing. I think it would have been really good if the public health department had had more resources for public information and public relations so that they could have gotten ahead of the rumors and the anti-science sentiment that developed among many people in the county. I'm not sure how we can get more funding for that. It's, it's an issue across the country that public health departments have not been fully funded and supported, and I, hopefully, we've learned our lesson as a country and as a state that those resources really need to be developed and maintained throughout the, even when there's not a pandemic going on. We had some, during the, during COVID, we had some involved and concerned community members who were, formed a committee to help the public health department get out messaging about the importance of wearing a mask, and this committee presented to the county commission and asked the county commission if they would vote to recommend that people in Midland County wear masks in public, and they did not vote for, to make that recommendation. It wasn't asking them to make it required, just to recommend it, and that's something that they weren't willing to do, and I found that a little bit disappointing. Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. So, like everybody has said before, I do think that the, our health department did do a, a good job and did as well as they could with what the resources they had. I think that they did attend several trainings and continually got information from state and federal resources, which was really important as things were changing quickly and recommendations were frequently changing very rapidly. I think that we need to make sure that they are fully funded and make sure that they have all the resources that they need, be that increased staffing in times of emergency, ability to attend trainings or, or travel outside of the state for trainings as needed. And I also think that another thing that we can do to have the county health department be more prepared for another health emergency is to have them more integrated in the community. As a young person, I was, I frequently heard my friends say that the county health department was just out to get them and was just yelling at people to wearing masks and kind of, it was a lot of the, it was the first time a lot of them had interacted with the, the county health department. Frequent, the, I've seen the health department doing things as of late, like such as offering HIV testing in the community and tabling at community events such as the fair and the recent drag show we had in Midland, and I think that that is very beneficial in having people interact with the county health department and develop a relationship with them prior to the next pandemic, and then hopefully they'll be more receptive to advice from the county health department in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Noson?
Yes, I'm going to echo all the comments. I am absolutely proud of our health department, a fantastic job, but you can always do better, and I think there are some things that we can do better. I think, Allison, you referred to communication. I think that is something we definitely can do better, and also, to, to be honest, working with, like, the Midland Daily News in terms of getting that information out to as many people as possible, I think that's something that's, that's definitely something we can work on. What we learned about resources and supplies, just basic supplies, I think we can start looking at a backlog and keeping storage of some of these supplies early on in, you know, you can't predict a pandemic, but you can have some basic supplies available. And then in terms of funding and resources, I, we put it on the department heads, and in this case Fred Janoski, to come to us with a budget, and we tell them to tell us what you need. Our job is not to micromanage. Our job is to set policy and direction, and if they come back with the needs, I think it's been, I, I can't think of a situation where we haven't responded favorably, we, the board, in terms of finding the funding. It's one of the reasons we keep a general fund, and that general fund at this point in time is, is about $11 million on a $33 million budget. There are many, many counties that would like to have that kind of a safety net. We do, and, and I'm proud of that. So overall, just a final comment, be flexible. You know, the pandemic has taught us that we need to be flexible and think about alternate ways to get things done. So with that, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mr. Will, Mr. Williger, you had, want a one-minute reply?
Sure, I do. So Allison, I just want to make mention that the entire United States received mixed messages from, we were looking to the CDC, and it got confusing, and that's regrettable. No excuses made, but I'm still confused by it. Additionally, that vote where it was not supported, remember that I believe myself, and I'm, you know, I supported it, and it also was a tie vote. We were, had one of the commissioners that was absent that day, and it's very regrettable, but that were the circumstances, but it was a tie vote, so half of us did vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Glave?
No, I don't have any comment.
Ms. Wilcox?
Well, thank you, Mr. Williger, for clarifying that. I was hoping that as a public health person, you would have voted for encouraging people to wear masks, which was the best that we knew at the time, and I think what we're seeing here is we all kind of agree on what the issues are. Some of us know more about what county can do and what they can't do, but it's our responsiveness to our constituents that helps us be better county commissioners and makes the board work better.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
I would just also like to highlight the part of, of public health that can't be solved on a, on a county level or maybe isn't best solved at a county level. I was part of a group that made and distributed over 13,000 masks into the community, and that is something that I'm immensely proud of, and I thought it was one of the, it was very amazing to see how the community pulled together and was able to accomplish that, and I don't really know if it could have been done on a county enforcement level or trying to order them or anything. It's just something that a community pulled together and do, and so that is also a key part of, of our community. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Noson?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is we talked a lot about the pandemic, and that's been our focus for three years now, but the county health does, department does so much more than respond to emergencies, and in particular, I would like to focus on a little bit, we talked about this ALIS population before, and guess what? They need health services as well, and I, I think that's an area where we can do a better job of finding these folks. We, one, one of the great things that we have is a GIS system that maps out the entire county, and we can actually put on a poverty overlay and identify areas that could be helped further, and I think human health and, you know, the, the health aspects of families are an important component of that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williger, you're up for the next question. What changes, if any, need to be made to the county's emergency preparedness plan?
I would say that Commissioner Noson probably can better answer that because he sits on preparedness. Jennifer Boyer is our manager, and in spite of the fact that she initially was new, I think she came on about the same time that, that I came on, probably five to six years ago, and boy, oh, boy, she wasn't treading water long, and, and to have her manage that catastrophic, I mean, she was the key player in it. She truly, truly was. Very proud of how she executed it, and, and, and the reason that it went so well is because they were prepared for it. They actually, she did preparedness exercises, and I think she does them at least annually, if not biannually, with each one of the school systems and with multiple other uses, of course, with the school resource officers. So very, very important to do that as well. I'm very pleased with how she executed her job, and actually, she also has an assistant now. I'm trying to remember the exact name of the position, but that person has been in place for 18 months to two years. I, at this point in time, can't think of anything that I would change, but it's always after you have the fact of the catastrophic event, but I would say that the county works in anticipation of those things. They try to be prepared. That's why we didn't lose a single person out of the evacuation. Again, another, the biggest success that we had, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Glave?
Yeah, I'm not aware of the emergency preparedness as far as being on the board, but I've seen the emergency preparedness from the hospital standpoint when we've done emergency preparedness training at the hospital, and it's something that the county coordinates with the hospitals and other agencies in the community, and I think that's the value of the emergency preparedness, is it's not just a silo by itself. It makes sure that they get out to the community, and when something like this happens, each of the different teams jumps into place with their piece and make sure that the county gets what it needs. And so I'm thankful for the county board and the people that they hire that do such an amazing job in these emergencies. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wilcox?
Could you repeat the question, please?
What changes, if any, would need to be made to the county's emergency preparedness plan?
Well, we had such terrific response by our emergency preparedness team from the flood in 2020. It's hard to imagine that we could do it much better. I will say, as we mentioned with public health, communication might be the only thing that I could see we might want to improve on because we can also always improve, but I, I recall the day of the 2020 flood, and we were pulling things out of our basement, carrying them upstairs, and text messages kept coming in saying which area of town had to evacuate, and it was probably four or five of those messages before I realized that applied to me, that it was my house, my family, that needed to stop carrying stuff out of the basement, pack up the dog and what we needed for overnight, and get out of town. And perhaps if we had had better communication in planning public relations, I guess, beforehand, before any kind of emergency, to get the public ready to understand what their own response is going to be. When you do, they do practice runs in emergency preparedness, it involves all the professional people, but it's difficult to get the community involved in those, and there, maybe there'd be a way to do that in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I would like to echo what the previous folks have said is that the, I believe that it was a miracle that nobody died during the event. I remember when I saw the pictures and heard the reports, thinking that probably dozens of people might have died, and I think it was only through our local county sheriff and our fire departments and all the township fire departments working together that there was not a loss of life. So I think that is a definite sign of success. I will say, and then also, there was, after the initial flood, there was also such a great response from our community, from local churches helping clean up stuff with the United Way, coordinating stuff, Dow bringing in supplies. It was, it was amazing to see and, and take part in. The only change that I feel that would be needed is, is possibly for fire departments and for the sheriff's, the county sheriff's office to have access to more boats. I know that I, one of my best friends was stranded on Wixom Lake in about knee-deep water, and granted, this is in Gladwin County, but the same situation also occurred in Midland County as well, and my friend called me and said that they were absolutely stranded and had no way of getting out, and I called the Gladwin County 911, and they said it would be at least four or five hours before they would have a boat to get to them. And so I just posted on Facebook and was able to have a friend of a friend with a pontoon go get them, but I think it would be a lot better if there was an official rescue there rather than just relying on someone to post on Facebook, so I think that Midland could also benefit from that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Noson?
Well, I certainly lived it. The Emergency Operations Center, I spent almost 72 straight hours in that area, and just so you know, we have a playbook. It's about this thick. We've spent time and energy going over these things, and, you know, it's not all about floods. Remember, we've, we had two emergencies. We had COVID as well, and that impacted, you know, what we could do as a response as well. But having said that, somebody once told me, you learn geology the day after the earthquake, and we did learn a lot, you know, after the flood, and communication was one of those things. It was very clear. We have an identified public informations officer that sits on the table, you know, right there in the round table. Everybody's got computers and all of that, but, and, and the more general issue is, is backup. We had all of these people who, that was their primary job, but, you know, obviously you can't work, you know, 24/7, you know, forever, so you needed backup, and so that's something. And by the way, we have debriefed the state, the feds. We've done a lot of debriefing and learned a lot about what we can do different. So we do the desktop exercises. We'll be doing more of those. You know, it's not limited to flooding, unfortunately. We live in a, a town that has a large chemical company too, so there are a number of scenarios there that we need to be prepared for as well. So I, I'll just leave it there with more exercise, more communication, and succession planning will be the, the order of the day there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do you have a one-minute reply?
I do. So I would say that the Four Lakes Task Force really addresses that we're, we're on track to, to start rebuilding those dams, and I think that I try to communicate that And I think that I try to communicate that, let's just say that out in my area, we're as far away from the flood as you can get on the southeast corner. So how absolutely devastating it was, there was so much significant damage and flooding in the city. And I would say that I value that relationship with the Midland Business Alliance and their mitigation plan and that Eagle grant that we just got. We are on task, and we're really headed in the right direction to execute what the city of Midland needs. And that would be Midland County, working together with the city of Midland. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Glave?
I just want to say that, from what I've read of the Four Lakes, it does seem like you've got people on that that really understand what the issues are and are really trying their best to make it work for everybody.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Wilcox?
Well, I think, as we've all said, our emergency preparedness is pretty good, but you can never rest on your laurels, and you need to continue to be well-prepared. It's good to know that we game out other situations also. I know there's people who come up with wild scenarios for the possible things that might happen, and I'm sure that our emergency preparedness people are following those kinds of things, too.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
I just wanted to add in how important, I think, communication is, and not just when there's an emergency, but before the emergency, so that you, you know who Steve on the fire department is, or you know who, you know, who the sheriff is for your area, or I mean, the sheriff officers, is for your area, and you have a relationship already built with them, you've trained with them, and so you have, you're approaching the situation from the same area, and you are prepared to work together. So I think that's really important to focus on.
Thank you. Mr. Noson?
Just very simply, I have never been prouder to be a county commissioner and part of the county of Midland. When we evacuated over 10,000 people, no loss of life, no injuries, that really is unheard of, and it just makes me be real proud of all the people involved. I think the townships, the fire departments, they should get all that credit, because they did the impossible. And I think I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. We're ready for the fourth question. In your opinion, what is the most underutilized county asset that needs attention and could be leveraged over the short term for increased jobs and economic development?
Well, certainly, there was, and I'm not sure if I mentioned this yet, Commissioner Noson, but there was, and you probably know, it was in Michigan Association of Counties, and it was utilizing ourselves as a resource for promoting lifelong employment and for people to service commissioners, or to serve working for the county, or to serve in public service for the city of Midland. And I think that we could do better at that. And I think it's a pretty innovative idea to actually go within, I don't know that you want to take up all of the juniors and seniors' time, but those political science kids that are interested, and do an in-service with them, and maybe through Delta College. And I think that that is something that we could easily do. And I'm not sure if we could even bring them into the county services building and just do some tours, and so that they understand, because a lot of folks don't really understand what commissioners do. They really, really don't. And it's, it's basic, but yet very complicated, too. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Glave?
I don't know of any commission, any of the things that the commission could do. But again, my issue is broadband, and they have some control over it. But I, I visit South Dakota quite often, and South Dakota made a decision a long time ago that they were going to have rural broadband everywhere. And so you've got ranches that it's miles between ranches, and yet every one of those ranchers has rural broadband. And it is an economic driver for the, for the state, and it would be also, I believe, an economic driver for Midland County as well. So my point would be that the county and the city should both be working to get as much funding as we can, so that every person in Midland County has access to rural broadband.
Thank you. Ms. Wilcox?
Could you repeat the question, please?
In your opinion, what is the most underutilized county asset that needs attention and could be leveraged over the short term for increased jobs and economic development?
Thank you. Well, I can think of some underutilized assets in the county. I'm not quite sure how they would apply to economic development, though, because, as has been mentioned, the county is actually pretty limited in what they can do. The county has a lot of mandates from the states, from the state, but cities and townships have responsibilities that the county cannot take from them and cannot interfere with, from them. So I think a lot of it is going to, would be for the county to get the townships to work together and to work with other counties. Success in Midland County cannot happen without success in Saginaw and Bay County. And we can do a lot more, I think, working as a Great Lakes Bay region to improve our economy, to bring new employers in, to attract affordable housing, and all of, all of those kinds of things that we want to do to improve our economy.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
So I want to dive deep into affordable housing, because I think that is one of the biggest issues I see, and the people that could be in those houses, I would say, are our biggest county asset. As a county commissioner, I plan to do everything in my power to help with this issue, be that being on, being a member of the zoning board and supporting zoning changes that allow for affordable starter homes in expanded areas of Midland County, or allow for building more affordable apartment complexes, offering tax deferrals for new construction projects, as long as they keep homes affordable for, to low-income and middle-income community members, subsidizing property for new construction by selling land from the Midland County Land Bank or the State of Michigan Land Bank. I would also advocate for allocating resources to holding classes for community members to improve their financial literacy and increase their knowledge of federal and state loans that they very well may qualify for. If people can afford to live in Midland County, they will be much more likely to stay in Midland County, to work here and raise their families here. This encourages economic growth and would grow our tax base for Midland County. It would not just benefit the individuals, the individual families that could utilize these programs, but would benefit our entire community.
Thank you. Mr. Noson?
Yeah, a couple of things. Further on broadband, I sit on the Midland Internet Connectivity Board, and that is our goal, is obviously broadband for all. We're in a unique situation right now where there is so much money out there, federal and state money, some of it for rural broadband targeted, but money out there to solve this problem. And so, in terms of an underutilized asset right now, we really need to work hard with the state, with the feds, on grant writing and getting some of this money for us. It's, it's very complicated, because the internet service provider actually gets the money, but they rely on us to provide some of the data. So one of the assets we have is our GIS system that can help them provide the data to find out where are those pockets? Believe it or not, that's a fundamental problem that we have. The other area I want to talk about is Michigan Works. I also sit on, on the board for Michigan Works. That's a five-county region right now. It does include Saginaw, Bay, Midland, Gladwin, and Isabella Counties. And quite frankly, I think we've struggled over the last couple of years at Michigan Works. We've had some, some issues about fiduciary, et cetera. We need to get that settled and move on, because we are, we need to be more focused on the output of Michigan Works, which is jobs. And so those are two areas that I would work on in terms of underutilized assets. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have a one minute?
Yeah, I do. I would say that really, from a county perspective, we really are not the boots on the ground to be able to execute. This is really at a township level. The three city commissioners, there's not a problem in the city, anyway, so to speak. So this really is in the Out County districts one, two, three, and four. So this is a relationship and collaboration with the MBA. The other challenge is that service providers, and, you know, you have, that, that is significant for the townships. Ingersoll got on board fast with lake.net, which is over in Homlock. But, you know, you know, basically, that's the provider for the area, so they're going to be busy with Ingersoll, so I've got to work on that for Mount Haley, because that's one of my townships, too. But there's challenges. We don't have an employee base for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Glave?
I don't have any.
Okay. Ms. Wilson?
I don't think so.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
I think I'm also good.
Okay. Mr. Noson?
Just a quick point. It goes back to what the county can and can't do. Zoning boards, I think I'm right here. I don't think you can actually be on a zoning board and have a commissioner's job at the same time. It's just one of those things that, that's how, yeah, it can be. I don't, I'm not sure that I agree with that, but that's the rule right now. But it does highlight the difficulty that we have sometimes as a county, trying to encourage townships and municipalities to get the job done when they have the resources and the responsibility to do it. Thank you.
While we have other questions, in looking at the clock, I think that I'm going to move to closing remarks. So thank you all for sharing your responses to these questions, and now we will finish with our closing statements. So, Ms. Wil.
My name is Gaye Twiliger, and as a lifelong resident, I know my neighbors and I know my community well. I really do love this community, and I really do love my job. Our current Board of Commissioners worked together very well, and that's extremely important, to be able to execute your business in a timely and professional manner. I really highly doubt that there is another Board of Commissioners in the U.S. that have executed all of their mandated services within, during a 500-year flood during a 100-year pandemic. We're a great team, and I would respectfully ask that you reelect me as the Commissioner of District Four on November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Glave?
I'm not a lifelong resident of Midland County. I moved here during the 86 flood, when we had to go all the way down to Shields to get across the river to get to our house, our new house. But I have learned to love Midland. It's a wonderful place to live. It's a wonderful place to raise a family, and I just want to be a part of keeping it a wonderful place to be. And I hope that you will vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wilcox?
My name is Allison Wilcox, and I'm running to be the Commissioner for District Five, which is entirely in the city of Midland, west of Eastman Avenue and south of Indian Butto, so that western swath of the city. I don't, I think our current county commissioners have done a good job. I don't think anyone's done a bad job. But sometimes it's time for a change. The incumbent in my district has been in office for 12 years. He's been opposed only one other time. And it's time for a new perspective on the county. My background in science and engineering has taught me to look at data and ask questions and how to work as a team. And I'm ready to work as a team with anybody, regardless of political party or what part of the county they live in. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I want to first thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. This was a great opportunity for us to let the voters know our positions. I am aware that I do not have the same level of experience as Scott when it comes to serving on boards and committees. However, I do have a lot of relevant experience volunteering and working with our community members to help them obtain resources and services they need. I also have experience with community organizing and leading meetings, moving towards solutions for any problems that arise. I know my perspective as a social worker, a woman, a lower-income person, and a younger person could bring a more diverse perspective to our county commission. If what I have said in this forum has resonated with you, I want to encourage voters of the seventh district to consider voting for me, Elena Smith. Thank you much.
Thank you. Mr. Noson?
Yes, I'd just like to focus back on where I started in terms of results, and results of, for us, a balanced budget over eight years and growing our general fund. I'm very proud that I was part of the School Resource Officer Initiative to get more school resource officers. I helped develop the five-year forward-looking financial plan, which is very, very important, and I think is incredibly important for scenario planning in the future. And then finally, the dams, getting those rebuilt and doing that without injuries. Those are all accomplishments that I feel very proud about, and I ask for your vote on November 8th. Scott Noson, District Seven. Thank you.
Well, that's it, voters. Candidates for county commissioner in districts four, five, and seven have given you a few of their views. We hope something said here tonight will help you in your voting decisions. I want to thank the candidates for participating in this forum. Even more important, a sincere thank you goes to the candidates for their willingness to serve as elected officials in these challenging times of governing. And to our listeners and viewers, thank you for your time and interest in watching this forum. Members of the League of Voters of the Midland area sincerely hope that you've seen and heard on this program tonight will help you with your voting decisions. We believe it is vital that citizens demonstrate informed and active participation in our government, so please be sure to vote. For more information on candidates, go into our vote411.org website, or online to our voter guide published by the League of Women Voters. Polls will be open on Election Day, Tuesday, November 8th, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. If you are voting in person, be sure you know the location of your designated voting place and have your necessary ID with you. Absentee ballots are available for all registered voters in Michigan. You can submit an application at clerks' offices in the city and throughout Midland County. They must be returned to your clerk's office before the close of the polls on Tuesday, November 8th, at 8:00 p.m. If you return your ballot by mail, use two stamps and mail it as early as possible. If you use a designated drop box for ballot returns outside of clerk's offices, please be sure it's your clerk's. If you have questions on absentee voting or any other aspect of the election process, please contact the appropriate clerk's office or go to michigan.gov/vote. And I would also add that we expect that the voter guides will be in the Midland Daily News's on Saturday, this Saturday. You should see it in the Midland Daily News, so be looking for that as well. It'll give you a real guy. It'll give you a real guide to what is going to be on the ballot. Finally, I extend a very special thank you to the people who have made this program possible. To our production manager, Matt Richardson, manager of MCTV, production director, Matt Thomas, production specialist, Chris Ferguson, and production assistant, Jim Malik. Thanks also to the contributors from the League of Women Voters, Jane and Mary. Thank you very much. And I would also say lastly, thank you again for joining us this evening. And please again, be sure to vote. Thank you.